Okay, we're calling to order the zoning board of appeals meeting of Thursday, June 12th, Lakeville Public Library. The first agenda, oh, I guess I'm supposed to ask, is anyone recording other than Lake Cameron? I do not see anyone indicating so. Okay, the first agenda item is the Beloso hearing. We received an email from Cody Beloso that he is asking for a continuance from tonight's meeting till the next meeting in July, which is July 17th. He is waiting to get through conservation and that meeting is not until June 24th. So, would anyone like to make a motion to continue the Beloso hearing till our July 17th meeting?
I make a motion we continue.
For the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, the next agenda item is the Lex Development hearing. Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, June 12th, 7:00 PM. Lakeville Public Library, Fort Precinct Street, upon petition of Lex Development, special permit is requested under the following Section 270-6.6C, Section 270-7.429, to allow a sign for the maximum height of 25 feet as measured by the crown of the road when only 20 feet is allowed. Section, number two, Section 270-6.6F, one, Section 270-7.429, to allow a sign larger in area than permitted. Number three, Section 270.6, 270-6.6F, four, Section 270.7.429, to allow an electronic message board of 22 square feet when only 12 square feet is allowed. The property site is Ten Harding Street. Application and assorted documents were able to be viewed at the planning department. Okay, that was a lot of numbers. So, who is here representing the applicant?
Good evening. Tim Hasham, President of Lex Development.
Okay.
Scott Clement with Sign Design.
And Bob Riggo with Riverhawk, excuse me, the civil engineer.
Okay, so you're looking to put a sign up that's outside of the permitted, allowed permitted height and whatnot? Tell us what you're looking to do, or who's going to talk or present?
I'll start. Yeah, so, we're trying to bring that property back to life. I'm sure you're familiar, Crossing Monkeys, the foundation has been there for 40 years. And part of the process is, I called Scott with Sign Design to design the sign for the 14 units we're going to be putting there. So, we designed that sign. And to allow the, you know, proper signage for what we're going to be putting in there is what we have designed for the, for the board.
And just, just to add a little bit to that, the sign is at a location, it's on Route 44, so it's fairly busy, high-speed travel, so a small sign is, is not going to work too well. So, we need a little bit larger sign to actually see going at, you know, 45, 50 miles an hour down Route 44.
Yeah.
So, that's why.
Forty-five, fifty.
Yeah, well, well, you know, depends on the traffic, right?
Yeah, and the amount of traffic and the, you know.
So, so, we were looking to make it a little larger than has required, than, than is allowed, or is required by the regular regulation, but is allowed by special permit.
Okay, let me read a couple of memos that we received from other boards into the record. We received a memo from the planning board dated June 10th. At their Thursday, May 22nd meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for the hearing from the Board of Appeals. After a lengthy discussion, the board made the following comments. The height of the sign should be reduced by at least two feet. The overall size of the sign should be reduced. The electronic message board is listed at 22 feet, but on the form it says three by nine. This needs to be clarified. There are no dimensions for the proposed signs on the building. The Board of Health sent a memo on May 30th. Board of Health has received the petition for hearing of Ten Harding Street and has no objections to the proposed sign. So, only because they incorporated it in, I am going to ask on point three of the planning board's memorandum, the question in regards to 22 feet, but on the form it says three by nine. This needs to be clarified. So, for the record, would someone mind clarifying?
Yes, it's, for the record, it is a three foot by, by nine foot, correct. Yep.
So, it is three by nine?
It is three by nine, correct.
So, it's 27 versus 22?
Twenty-seven square feet. Yep, so, if I can speak now.
Go ahead, Ed.
When we were designing this, essentially what we did is looked at the neighboring properties.
Right.
This particular sign is 25 feet. This one's possibly 24, maybe 25. It was too windy for me to get my tape all the way up there, but there are also 10-foot wide boxes as well. So, as far as sizes were put, it, it was designed based on the two neighboring properties. And then, for the message center itself, Monkeys is a three-foot by 12-foot message center. And that's a four-by-eight message center. This is roughly four by eight. Again, it's a little bit windy, I couldn't quite get a full measurement on that, on that message, and these are all neighbor.
Right, no, I think your point is, it's in character with what is already up there. And I, I do personally think that that little section of Route 44 that is Lakeville is a little different than the rest of the character of Lakeville, so. As far as the message board, could you elaborate on how often the message will change, what's the frequency? I mean, that, that's one of, and I believe, don't hold me to this, but I believe there are some guidelines anyways, as far as what can and can't happen, just so people won't get distracted when they're driving.
Most towns, unless they have a bylaw pertaining to them, they go with the state code, which I believe is, I have to look it up. I guess I don't want him to speak, but it's, you can't have a flash sign, you can't just spin them over. It might be every one minute, something to that effect, but there is a state code that...
So, you'll abide by the?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, it would just be obviously tenants on site, obviously.
Right, which I, actually, I know that that is the case, so.
Correct.
Anything other than tenants, it becomes a billboard, which we don't have.
Right.
As a use in Lakeville, so. Other questions from board members?
What will the messages be, are they pertinent to the tenants?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, the tenants in the building will have, you know, an option to advertise their business on the messages.
So, by my calculations, you have a 25-foot tall sign?
Or proposing, yes.
Okay. Can you explain kind of the justification for having such a tall sign?
Well, there's 14 units in the building, so you can see the, they have...
Do you have the renders? I can pass these out. I guess maybe you can, maybe explain it by, you have maybe close to like eight feet at the base before you get to the first sign, right?
Yeah.
Yep, exactly. That's roughly 94 inches, it looks like.
I get that you have 14 tenants.
Right, yep.
But that gets eight feet up, and then you go another 17 feet beyond that.
Correct.
Right, so, why?
That's usually for visuals, right? For traffic, if someone's pulling out of a driveway, if we drop that, it just, it's a lot harder to see. When you, when you have space in between poles, you can get some visuals as well.
And especially people pulling out of the park also.
Out of the, out of the entrance, I'll show you the...
It's a safety issue.
Yeah, safety issue for sight lines. The actual sign location we're proposing is right here. So, for people exiting out on the millennium circle, kind of be able to see through that, that sign without impacting their field of vision. If you had a big blind sign, a big blind spot. So, we have to start up higher.
Okay. What's the tallest height of the other signs you referred to?
25 foot.
So, you're no taller than?
No taller, and that's a good example. There's a lot of towns that wouldn't allow you to go this low.
That is true.
Because, because of the visual, it's something, when we designed, we kind of take that into consideration, is keeping it up a little bit.
Yep.
For the driver.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? Anyone in attendance have any comments? Okay. I don't know if we want to take any action on this. I mean, in my opinion, I think that, you know, as long as they're going no higher than what's already in that area. And again, I do think 44 is a little different animal than, than the rest of the town. I'm not so sure I'd be in favor of a 25-foot high sign.
25.
Anyplace else in town, but, so, let's make a motion.
I make a motion we approve the sign as proposed.
Approve the petition as proposed. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. You guys are all set, so. 14 days, we get, we have to go to the clerk's office, then from there, there's a 20-day appeal period. After that, come back to the clerk's office, file it with the registry, and then be able to see if we can get it running.
I see you, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Take care. All right, next on our list, we have the Barnick hearing. So, Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, June 12th, 7:00 PM, Lakeville Public Library, Fort Precinct Street, upon petition of Nicholas and Anita Barnick. Special permit is requested under Section 270.6.3C-1, in Section 270.7.4, to allow a 1,444 square foot accessory structure, which is larger than the 1,000 square foot structure that is allowed. The property site is Six Village Road, and application documents were available to be viewed at the planning department, so. Hi, guys.
Hi.
I will disclose right now that I am one of the abutters, so when I got the piece of mail from the zoning board of appeals, I was surprised to see it wasn't additional work for me to study up on, but, so, they are my neighbors, there's no financial impact on it, so, there's no reason for me to recuse myself on this one. But, for the record, I wanted everyone to know that. So, tell us what you're doing, Nick.
Yeah, so, so my dad, who's in pretty ill health, has collected cars, empty cars for most of his life, and he would like to will several of his cars to my three boys. So, I'm looking for a storage space for his cars. So, these are cars that he and I, you know, I collected with him, worked with him to find them, bring them home, and they have strong sentimental value to our family, so we, we'd like to keep them in the family.
And because you're going over 1,000 feet now, you got to come see us?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to read into the record a couple of memos. So, the Board of Health, memo dated May 30th. Board of Health has received a petition for hearing of Six Village Road, and providing the proposed garage addition will not have any water or sewer connections and not be used as a dwelling, then the Board of Health has no objections to the proposed garage addition. You putting any sewer connections or any water in there?
No.
Okay. We also have a letter from the Conservation Commission. I have reviewed the petition for hearing submitted by the Barnicks, the zoning board of appeals, seeking approval for variance of construction of 1,444 square foot accessory structure to house antique cars. There are no wetland resources present on the property, consequently, consequently, yes, the Conservation Commission has no concerns regarding this petition. And, making sure, those are the only two we have. So, I'll open it up the questions from board members.
I want to disclose something right now.
Yes.
I thought I recognized the name. If you look at the drawing there, who's, who's the surveyor who stamped it?
I'm going to take a guess without going, but in fact, it's probably someone named...
Okay, engineer, maybe just...
So...
It's 2008.
I was just going to say, the question I have on that is obviously, I'll back to the engineering for the subdivision, what, 17, 18 years ago?
17 years ago, yeah, 17.
Yeah, so, your call, Jeff, but I don't think you have a vested interest anymore in whether the Barnicks get this.
I have no vested interest in, but other than the fact that I'm the one who stands the plan.
Okay. And the plan he's referring to is the original plan, back to the subdivision, has nothing to do with the?
No.
Garage that they're looking to put up? Other questions or?
Just to put a clarification, so, they have a structure in here that's a garage, all right, right?
Yes.
That's attaching it to?
Yes.
Correct? So, is that considered an accessory structure now?
Would you say, would you say it's a considered, the initial, was it accessory?
This?
Yes.
That's an accessory structure?
To the original house, it is, yeah.
So, was that?
That, this, this bylaw that we're talking about just got put in place within the past year, that you can't put accessory structure on your property if it's more than 1,000 feet, or if it's a larger property, it kind of escalates up, right, Chris?
Yes.
So, this is, this is a, this, we, that's why we have three of these on here tonight, and I think we're going to get more of those as time goes on.
What's the size of that garage now?
The existing?
Correct.
28 by 48.
Are you attaching it?
Yes.
So, it'll still be just one garage?
Yes.
You're just increasing the size of the garage?
Yes.
Therefore, there'll only be still one structure?
So, you'll have in total just about a 2,800 square foot structure in the back?
Yes.
Okay. And there's, is there existing water in this, the water supply in the existing garage?
No.
Okay. I know a sewer hookup in that.
No.
Correct.
Okay. Everyone else good at this point?
I'm good, I'm good.
Do we have any questions or comments from the audience? Hello, Noel.
Hello, Noel, resident of Lakeville. I just, I noticed that there are three, it was brought to my attention, three, that are exceeding the recommended 50% that are on the agenda for tonight. And so, the size of, the size of this, people that I've spoken with are concerned about environmental impacts. I spoke with Kathy Murray, I saw the plans for all three of these, and she assured me that no water is being tapped into to increase water supply, no septic is being applied for, and no habitation. So, essentially, nobody's going to be living there. However, in the same breath, she said, unless they go to the Board of Health down the road, and I just hope, I just really hope that we don't see a flurry of oversized outbuildings where people are just saying, yeah, it's just going to be an outbuilding, and then all of a sudden, they want water and they want a toilet in there, so they don't have to go to the house, and then, that's my cautionary concern.
Well, Noel, I'm going to agree that I think a lot of people will be concerned about that, but unfortunately, we can't do anything to prevent what happens in the future other than if somebody's down the road and this goes beyond. One of the concerns the folks have is, it's not necessarily the people who are applying for it now. You sell the house and the next person comes along and says, hey, great, we're going to put my in-laws in there, and then the next person after that says, well, I'm going to turn around and rent it out and all this other stuff. Unfortunately, there's only so much we can do to, to guard against that, so.
That's what I hear, not just from my concern, but other people echo the same concerns. Thank you.
We hear you, Noel. Any other comments? Anyone want to make a motion, recommendation?
Let somebody else do it. I'll make a motion to accept the application.
Motion to approve the application, as the petition has applied for. Do we have a second?
I second.
No conditions? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So, four, four, one against.
Correct.
Okay, motion carries. You're good?
Thank you.
14 days, goes to the clerk's office, there's a 20-day appeal period. After that, goes back to our zoning board office, and then it gets filed with the registry, and then you can get your permit.
Thank you.
You're welcome, take care. All right. Next up, Packwin. So, zoning board of appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law, 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, June 12th, 7:00 PM, in the Lakeville Public Library, Fort Precinct Street, upon the petition of Aaron and Sherry Packwin. Special permit is requested under Section 270-4.1 for residential use/structure located in the business zoning district. Proposed is to, the proposal is to construct a three-bedroom dwelling located above a garage to be used for agricultural purposes. Property site is M027-V002-L023, Rear Bedford Street, Loom Pond Road. Application and assorted documents were available to be viewed at the planning department. So, Craig, how you doing?
Evening Chairman Board. My name is Craig Medeas, I am the attorney for Aaron and Sherry Packwin. As John just indicated, it would be for you to request a special permit to allow a single-family residence in a business district pursuant to the closing by law, Section 270 4.1. I believe that this request is warranted in particular in this case, is this property is located in an area which is residential in nature. There are single-family residences on either side of the property. One of them is actually my client's principal residence. It was actually their intent to build this house, which is in the style of a barn and medium for their daughter to live in. The lot itself meets all the dimensional requirements of the kind of Lakeville zoning bylaws. It has 175 feet of frontage, 77,102 square feet of area. It does have the required side setbacks of 60 feet for a residential structure in a business zone. A front setback of 111 feet and a rear setback of 281 feet, so it's well situated on the lot. As I indicated, my client does indicate to permit this where he has started to live in, for whatever other financing purposes, he needs to have his separate lot, separate dwelling from his own house. If the board does have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Yes, I still to this day do not know why we have all that property along Loom Pond zoned as, well, I have a suspicion why they did that 100 years ago, not literally, but it is a very residential neighborhood, as Craig pointed out. So, we do have a couple of letters or memos, I should say, to read into the record. We have a letter from the Conservation Commission, dated, it's like they didn't date it, but Kathy gave it to me today, so it was very recently. I have reviewed the petition for hearing submitted to the zoning board of appeals by Aaron and Sherry Packwin, seeking approval for a variance of construction of a three-bedroom dwelling located above a garage. Variance is required for the construction of the proposed residential within a business zoning district. Conservation Commission has no concerns regarding this petition per se. Portion of the driveway for the proposed dwelling is within the 100-foot buffer zone of the adjacent wetland resource area. Mr. Packwin has submitted a notice of intent for the proposed work currently before the Conservation Commission. Any impacts of wetland resources areas will be conditioned through the Conservation's deliberations, so. We also have a memo dated May 30th from the Board of Health. Board of Health has received a petition for hearing for Rear Bedford Street, Loom Pond Road, and has no objections to the proposed dwelling above a garage. So, again, like I said, only because of how that property is zoned, they are before us. If it wasn't zoned, commercial, or business, I should say, it wouldn't be here. And that area is anything but business, that section there, Loom Pond, I should say. So, any questions or classifications or points anyone wants to bring up?
Did you bring a design with you?
I did, I just submitted it in your packet. It's actually the septic design of your property.
That's...
Yeah.
I was actually looking for, not the...
Yeah, so, in terms of...
Lay out of the lot, I'm looking for the actual design of the structure.
So, the structure's here, it's kind of like a barn and medium.
He meant, he meant more like what it's going to look like.
Oh, it's not, I actually have architecturals of the building yet. They didn't go to that point, it's just our site design.
Feel like this?
Yeah, they, they don't have architecturals, our actual building design yet. I want to make sure they got proof for it before they actually get in line.
Good.
I mean, effectively, like I said, the whole first floor is going to be a garage. My client owns and operates a cremory block on the other side of the street, so he's going to use a portion of that garage space on the first floor for his equipment. And then, the whole upstairs is going to be living area.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the audience? Anyone in attendance, comments? Okay, anyone interested in making a motion?
I make a motion we approve the petition, the special permit.
Okay, special permit, motion on the table to approve the special permit as applied for. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Unanimously, right, Craig? I don't need to repeat it for you.
Thank you.
Take care. All right. Next up, Collins. Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, June 12th, 7:00 PM, in the Lakeville Public Library, Fort Precinct Street, upon the petition of Shane and Rachel Collins. Special permit is requested under Section 270-6.3C-1, in Section 270-7.4, to allow a 1,304 square foot accessory structure, which is larger than 1,000 square foot structure that is allowed. Property site is two upon a quick drive. Application and assorted documents were able to be viewed at the planning department. So, I'm assuming you two are the Collins.
Yes, we are.
Okay, so...
Just quickly, John?
Yes.
I'm also an abutter, just like you. I'm, I'm good to go.
You have no financial interest in this?
No.
Excellent, so, thanks for the clarification, Chris. So, obviously, it looks like you're looking to put something on there that's a little bigger than what's allowed, so I'll let you stand on that if you want to at all.
Sure, we're actually going to add a two-car garage detached. We're not adding water, sewer, none of that. A few years ago, back in 2022, because we purchased the house in 2020, and it's us, my parents, as well as my grandmother and my son, who live there, which she, we do have...
A three-car garage that we built.
Yeah, we added a three-car garage and onto the kitchen, and we don't have attic space, and our basement is mostly crawl space, so we do not have a lot of storage. So, that's why we're going to add a second detached garage.
I was looking at the plan for me.
That's what it is.
Any questions from the board? Actually, I jumped ahead here, let me keep my routine going. Let me read the memos we have into the record. So, we have another memo from the Conservation Commission. We've reviewed the petition for hearing submitted by Shane and Rachel Collins of the zoning board of appeals, seeking approval for a variance of construction, 1,304 square foot garage, a two upon a quick drive. There are no wetland resources present on the property, consequently, the Conservation Commission has no concerns regarding this petition. And we have the memo from May 30th from the Board of Health. Board of Health has received the petition for hearing of two upon a quick drive, and providing the proposed garage will not have any water or sewer connections and will not be used as a dwelling, then the Board of Health has no objections to the proposed garage. So, you've already clarified for us, no water or sewer collection, and I'm assuming you will confirm that it's not going to be used as a dwelling.
It is not.
Okay, now I'm opening up to the board.
I think it's a great project. Looks nice, the drawings.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You got drawings on this one, Jared?
I love drawings.
Bring you some crayons next meeting.
I'm glad you like the drawings.
Anyone in the audience or abutters? See anyone? Okay, no one else has anything else to add or questions to ask? I will entertain a motion if anyone so inclined.
I make a motion we approve the special permit for the Collins.
Okay, motion...
Two upon a quick drive.
Motion's on the table to approve the special permit as applied for. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No one. Motion carries unanimously. All right, good luck. 14 days, it goes to the clerk's office. Fourteen days it goes to the clerk's office, twenty days of appeal. If no one appeals, it comes back to us and then you guys go get it.
Thank you very much.
Take care of the registry and go see Nate for a permit.
Thank you.
Take care.
You too.
All right, we'll get there. Groundhog day with these things. Okay, Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law forty-eight as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, June twelfth, seven P M. Lakeville Public Library, four precincts street, upon the petition of Kevin Faria. The special permit is requested under section two seventy four dash six point three C one and section two seventy dash seven point four to allow a twenty-four-hundred-square-foot accessory structure which is larger than a thousand-square-foot structure that is allowed. Property site is twenty-seven Kingman Street. Application and assorted documents were able to be viewed at the planning department. All right, so I'm assuming you're Kevin?
Yes.
Okay, so tell us what you're doing, Kevin.
I'm looking to pretty much put up a garage for storage. We have a forty-five-foot camper, couple boats, three trucks, bunch of toys.
You got a lot of stuff, Kevin.
Looking for somewhere to keep it all out of the weather and in good shape.
I guess that's, that's what you gotta do when you got a lot of stuff, so.
Yeah.
All right, let me read into the record some memos we have from the Conservation Commission. We've reviewed the petition for hearing submitted by Kevin Faria to the Zoning Board of Appeals seeking approval of a variance for construction of a steel garage, twenty-seven South Kingman Street, Lakeville, Mass. While there are wetland resources present on the property, proposed activity will not impact the resource and is well outside the hundred-foot wetland buffer zone. Based on the information provided, the Conservation Commission has no concerns regarding this petition. And we also have a memo dated May thirtieth from the Board of Health. Board of Health has received the petition for hearing of, for twenty-seven South Kingman Street and providing the proposed garage will not have any water or sewer connections and will not be used as a dwelling. And the Board of Health has no objections to the proposed garage. Any water or sewer connections?
Nope.
No one's gonna be using it for a residence?
No.
Board members, questions?
We're more than covered with lot coverage, I believe.
I believe we are.
Yes.
You have anything? You look like you wanna say something.
No, no, nothing. It's, it's our garage.
How about you?
I just think obviously the structure is pretty significant in size.
Yes.
Right? And I totally, I guess.
It's a lot.
You have a lot of things that you wanna store.
Yep.
But the size is large, a lot, right? And as we continue to like review these applications and have these sized structures put before us, it puts us in a difficult position because if we approve this, then we create a precedent, right? And so every time someone comes with a twenty-four-hundred-foot structure or twenty-eight-hundred-foot structure, we're gonna have to consider it and consider the precedent that we've set before. And I'm not quite sure when the zoning board, right, will uphold what we have put in as a bylaw and enforce it, right? To me, it's like way big, far too big, right? And you're asking us to approve it. I get it. And you have all these toys to store.
Correct.
But to me, it's too big. Would you reconsider resizing it to something that's far less, more towards the, the lotting size that's in the bylaw?
Well, I'm well within the setbacks of everything.
I, I get that.
Just being able to fit a forty-five-foot camper inside during winter.
That's really not my concern.
So just for clarification, and I learned this a long time ago from the guy we talked about earlier, we do not set precedent. And the reason we don't set precedent is because we can make those different decisions. Having said that, I, I can see what Jerry's concerned is, you know, at what point do we say no? So it's not an unfair question to ask to say, is there any way you could potentially do a little less? Now, whether you want it or not, that's completely up to you. I mean, the rest of the board may not care how big it is or isn't, but it's something you may wanna consider. What I am gonna do at this point before you answer that is I'm pretty sure this is the last agenda item other than approving minutes and whatnot, and we have a little bit of crowd there, so I'm sure they're not here to listen to us approve our agenda, our, our meeting minutes. So does the board have any other questions?
Well, I, I think it's a fair point Jerry has, like, are we gonna have massive structures popping up all over Lakeville, especially space metal buildings and like, at what point does it become?
Right.
A problem?
Too big.
It, it's massive, yeah.
What, where is our threshold?
It's up to us to decide. We don't have one, that's why they come to us.
I'm wondering when we get to it.
Yeah.
When we're, we'll get to it.
The thing is, he has a, a, the lot size is quite adequate, seventy-nine thousand square feet. Putting, building, he's putting it right in the middle of the lot, so I don't think it's.
It's in the, behind all the residential houses, well away from disturbance of any of the abudders.
I mean, I can see both sides as well. I mean, I'm also looking at where these are on location. At least everyone before us tonight, the location was pretty good for something like this. It was way in the back where no one can really see it, not within the setbacks. I understand both sides at the point, it is large. Obviously, it was encroaching on other issues like setbacks, I would say.
Could I make a suggestion? Could we, is there anyone, could we ask the audience?
No, that's, I wanted to get you, that's, that's, that was my point. I'm pretty sure a bunch of these folks are abudders and probably gonna have comments. So my concern with this bylaw is, I shouldn't say the by, my, I'm interested to hear what the neighbors and the abudders think because that's, it's, they're the ones who are gonna get impacted by it. Now, it doesn't necessarily mean if they're opposed to it, that I'm gonna say, all right, I'm opposed to it, but it, it could be valid concerns and then, you know, the, the best result is we come up with a solution that makes everyone kinda happy because no one's gonna be completely happy, right? So if you have two sides to a, of an issue. So do we have any other questions at this point? We'll get another bite of the apple, but I do wanna open it up to the.
Yeah, is there anything in the plan to, what's gonna be done with rainwater coming off that structure? Now it's contained and taken care of?
Just gutters on the building or? Lot's pretty flat, so it's.
Yeah, I'm just concerned if, if there's any excessive flooding to the property lines.
Oh, no. They're about the same on the either side, other than the drop-off in the back that's towards the wetlands that I'm well away from.
Yeah, okay.
All right, why don't we open it up to questions from the audience? So Noel seems to be chomping at the bit he hadn't come up, so.
I'm sorry to, to rain on the parade of this nice young couple who has so many things to store. Twenty-four-hundred square feet is a lot of territory and you're naturally gonna be paving this, so the, the ground is gonna be completely sealed and yes, you're gonna have not just, we're not worried about the gutters, we're worried about the soil around the property. And we get heavy rains, we get flooding, we get flooding here. And I just, at what point do you say no? You know, what, at what point do you say, look, modify your plan, it's too big? I mean, sooner or later, you have to say no. And I wouldn't say no to that, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Noel. Hello, Leah.
Leah Fabian, thirty South Kingman Street, your neighbors. So I'm not necessarily in favor or against right now, I just still have some questions. I didn't have a chance to get to the planning board to look at the plans. Is it all one level? Is there upstairs? So it's all one level?
Yep.
Okay. The property, if I'm not mistaken, kinda goes uphill, doesn't it?
Yes, kind of. Our house along with the neighboring house, they both go.
Kind of uphill.
Uphill and then it flattens after the house.
So we have had some fires in our neighborhood over the, I would venture to say I'm one of the oldest neighbors now. Will there be adequate access to get back there where the structure's gonna be twenty-four-hundred-foot square foot structure could be?
Yes.
Okay. I also wanna be sure that we're not gonna be operating a business out of there. That's one of my concerns. I don't know how we would address that tonight because we don't know that, but I do know that.
Yeah, normally with the business stuff, it, it reverts back to, you know, town bylaws, what businesses can be done. I mean, the size of this obviously could make it easier for someone to do something out of there, but if it's something that's allowed, it's allowed. If it's something that isn't, just because we issue them, if we were to issue them a permit to put something of this size in place, it doesn't mean they automatically can start doing something by right.
Right. And the reason, right, and the other reason why I say that is because that's just past that really sharp curve down there where I won't walk on that side of the street because you're gonna get killed the way the cars come around there. So that's a bit, you know, stressful to me if there should be a ton of trucks or whatever. I mean, hey, everyone has their choice. I have a tractor in my yard, okay? So, so I just, you know, the, the size is big. I can't even see it from my property, but that's also kinda what I'm thinking about too is, you know, my husband and I have talked about possibly building an ADU out back, but that's nine hundred square feet. That's huge. I mean, our garage is two floors and it's twelve hundred square feet, the garage and then the room above. I can't physically imagine how big twenty, that's like double, triple my, my, only my garage, so that is kind of a lot of, you know, square footage, but I know you wanna get your stuff indoors, so.
Good.
Just a couple comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Leah. Anyone else?
I'm Mike Van Der Slazen and we live at twenty-three South Kingman Street. We've been there a long time, thirty-something years. There's been a lot of change in Lakeville and usually the change is people coming from elsewhere. They come here 'cause, we don't know why, because once they get here, they want sidewalks and street lights and you kinda wonder why they select here. We like the town very much and we really don't wanna see the town change. And this kind of a giant metal building, two doors down from where we live, is a really unwelcome change. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. What's wrong with a sidewalk? We still don't have a lot of them, so don't worry, Jared.
It's good to walk.
Nor do we have, nor do we have street.
Someone oughta just make one.
Come on up.
Hi, I'm Sarah Kuzinow, thirty-two South Kingman Street. I've also lived in the neighborhood, not as long as Leah, or last gentleman, but for twenty-seven years. I have a question for the Farias. How is the garage going to be oriented on the property? Will the bays be facing towards South Kingman Street? Will it be facing towards the, the neighbors? Just trying to figure out.
So there'll be one kind of fourteen-by-fourteen-foot door facing towards South Kingman.
So it's, it's a single door? It's not a number of different bays? And what's, I know you said it's a steel building. What's the aesthetic? Is it, is it, it's not like fluorescent green or anything, is it?
No, so it'll be a charcoal gray siding with a black wainscoting around the bottom.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
You can come on up and ask away.
I'm also at twenty-three South Kingman Street. So it seems to me that you have to remove quite a bit of greenery trees in order to create a driveway to drive around to the back of your house?
It'll more just be for the building itself. The left side of the house is already pretty clear, that was from previous.
Okay, so my lot, I don't know the shape of your lot, but my lot, my neighbor's lot, twenty-five South Kingman Street, are long and skinny. There's, in fact, I barely have the sixty feet on either side. I don't see how you can put a driveway in and I, I, you obviously have plans that they have approved as far, or are going to approve as far as the footage is on either side, but to me, it seems difficult to imagine how it's gonna fit.
Ma'am, when you say sixty feet, are you referencing distance between the side of your house to the, to the setback, to the side boundary?
Yes, between the properties.
Okay, yeah. Because they need to have a hundred and seventy.
All of the lots on the, that side of the street are growing narrow. We've got two and a half acres, but.
Right, you have the hundred and seventy-five feet, which is honestly, most, most properties are a hundred and seventy-five feet across, so the developer can maximize what he's putting in. Anyone else in the audience?
Good evening, Daniel Olms, I'm from twenty-two South Kingman Street. Just like the other abudders, I have concerns, the size of the structure, what it's being used for. I fear that it will go commercial at some point, whether it's these owners or any future owners, the aesthetics as well. So just like their concerns, I'm piggybacking with, with my neighbors on their concerns. Thank you.
Okay. I think we have everyone. Any other additional questions or comments from the board?
So on this plot plan here?
Yes.
How do you, how do you get from your existing driveway to?
So I plan on just, there, that current shed is, is all rotten and falling apart, so I plan on going up that way and then over into it.
Paved or gravel or?
Probably just be gravel.
And what's the, how heavily tree is it from the house to the proposed structure?
So from the house to the structure, you can see where it has the edge of the woods line?
Yep.
That's where it starts, before that, it's all just grass.
All right, and then to build the structure, I would imagine you're gonna take down the trees to a point behind?
Yeah, probably ten feet around.
There is a path, but.
Yeah.
Was it already there from the previous owners?
Yeah, where the cut-in is, is open and then there's a big open section in the middle, so it's mostly just the front and some on the sides.
So you'd only cut away the vegetation ten feet off either side of the structure, which would mean you'd have, what, thirty-seven feet of wooded area? I'm looking at the photo to the right.
Yeah, either.
And forty feet of, on the, on the left for a, for a buffer. So I guess now I will put you on the spot. Any consideration to adjusting the size? As you've heard, a couple of the folks on the board have asked about that and obviously that seems to be the number one concern of your neighbors. Not that it sounds like anybody is completely opposed to you putting up some structure, but it just seems like this structure may be a little bit bigger. Obviously, it doesn't look like a standard, traditional two-bay garage with, you know, a little.
No.
One above it, it's, and I get it, you have an RV, you can't, you can't use that, that type of a structure for an RV, but any thoughts on shrinking it? So let me walk you through something here. If you ask us to vote and we take a vote and it doesn't pass, because this is a special permit that you're applying for, it needs to have supermajority, so the five of us here, you mean you need to get four out of five votes. You don't get four out of five votes, even if you get three out of five, it does not pass. If it doesn't pass, you can't come back to see us for the same application unless it's significantly different. And significantly different isn't necessarily, I wanna shrink it by a hundred feet, I believe, or something like that, so.
I'm just kind of trying to look enough, putting up one building and being done rather than needing, say, two.
Right, and I'm walking you through this just because most people don't have to come before us if, if at all, and if they do, it's probably one time so they don't know the process.
Yeah.
But if you, if you want us to vote, we can, I can ask for a motion if somebody wants to make it. And like I said, if it doesn't pass, then you kinda stuck without doing anything for at least a couple of years. You could turn around and say, look, I want some time to digest it. Let me see if I can muddle the plan that's a little more amenable, talk to your neighbors in the meantime, see if you can get them on board with you, and you come back to the next meeting.
I thought I was, with as far as my abutting neighbors, I just didn't know how far. Wait a minute.
Right.
I know all my abudders directly are okay.
Like I said, you have the option to say, I wanna continue. And I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just giving you all of your options so you don't make a decision right now. And if you don't wanna continue, that's fine too. I can ask someone if they wanna make a motion and we'll.
I'd like to continue at it.
Okay, so you wanna come back in July and see if you can come up with another option or continue right forward? Just take a vote with what you have?
Yes.
Okay. He wants to go, continue to make a vote? He wants to go forward, so if somebody wants to make a motion and we'll see if it applies.
Let's go see. I make a motion. We approve the special permit.
As applied for, do we have someone who will second the special permit as applied Well, I will, I guess I'll step down, I will make the second so we can have further discussion and then I can call a vote, since the petition would like us to see what happens here, so. Any consideration of changing that square footage at all, size at all?
Like, what size would I be, would be allowed?
More doable.
Or more doable to it?
How big's the, let's put it this way, it sounds like you have a bunch of stuff, but the biggest item that's driving this may be the RV, is that correct?
Forty-five feet. Plus, I'd like to keep the-
We're supposed to go forward with the vote?
We can have discussion.
Seconded, so let's move to the vote.
Jerry, just, you know, making a motion and seconding it allows discussion. Well, you normally don't have discussion, but it does allow for discussion. Jack will counsel a challenge if you'd like to lay the point. What was the size of it again?
Currently, proposed 45 by 60.
No, 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 your RV.
Forty-five feet with a 30 by, no, inside I lose.
You need to have, it's 45 feet long, you need approximately 5 feet on either side.
If I went down to 30 by 50, it'd be a tight squeeze.
Squeeze, that'd be two and a half.
30 by 50 is how big of a structure though?
1500.
Versus?
That he can't have anything in it.
Then I'd, I'd kind of lose being able to put anything else in during the winter.
So you really, you really want, you want, you really-
I was kind of trying to just have one, one building that can hold everything rather than five buildings to hold everything, or a building and three sheds, kind of one structure on the property rather than additional, or needing additional for anything else.
So that would be your alternative plan, is to put additional structures on the property?
If, yeah, to fit.
The sheds that are there right now?
Are all rotted and falling apart anyway, so those I'm, I'm coming down, which that currently holds my motorcycle and lawn equipment and-
Tools.
Tools, pretty much.
Okay, so we're at 2,600 square feet.
2,400.
2,400, excuse me, 2,400 square feet. All right, any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Nosed.
Posed. It is denied, sorry about that, but you'll have to wait two years to come back if you want to apply for it again.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have meeting minutes from April 17th that we need to approve.
I make motion, we approve the minutes for April 17th.
We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. We need a representative from this board to sit on the zoning bylaw review advisory committee to this, and I know that Mr. Youngquist is interested in doing that, so I would make a motion that we-
Somebody else wants to do it?
I'll enthusiastically endorse that.
What is that, describe the board, what is that?
Zoning Board, zoning-
Is that the planning thing with McCacken?
Zoning bylaw review advisory committee, yeah, they review the bylaws and they come up with any suggestions or changes.
So who's a part of that board?
There is nobody at this point, they need a representative from the, they need a representative from the zoning board, so.
Who are they? Who are, say, they, who are they?
The Select Board is looking to put this board together. So when I say they, there's nobody on, nobody there yet, they're looking for representatives from planning board, zoning board, I think conservation, water health, so.
Jerry, you're interested?
No.
How about it?
Jeff, you sound highly engaged. You sound highly, oh, so I will second Jeff, if someone's already made a motion to approve Jeff, I'll second that.
Yeah, well, let's do this again. So who wants to make, I think I started, but we'll reset here. Who wants to make a motion for Jeff to be appointed to that committee as the zoning board representative?
I'll make that motion.
And second. I thought he enthusiastically-
It's not as enthusiastic, I think we just-
He made an enthusiastic motion to approve.
Okay, do we have any further discussion, unless Campbell's interested in it, but he can hide over there. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion carries. There's just an announcement that there is a transit-oriented development of the MBTA station in Lakeville. I believe the meeting is on the 23rd, if anyone is interested in attending, they're looking to discuss what options they have to, what they can do with the-
I can tell you what they're going to do with it already.
Well, I guess you can go to the meeting and see if you're right, but I know I'm right, yeah, so.
At the parking lot, essentially?
Yeah.
No, no, just talking about the parking lot.
No, no, it's, it's informal, it's, it's just an announcement. Although, hang on, I have one other thing I do want to bring before this.
Just go by their, their zoning initiative from the government.
Yeah, yes. Okay, so gentlemen.
Running spot.
It's perfect.
If you remember our last meeting with, when LeBaron was here, the water issues they were having with Taunton, trying to get that resolved, and I did make the uncharacteristic comment of, you know, we normally don't get involved in that stuff, but if there's anything we could do to advocate or help them get that corrected with Taunton, that we would, you know, do that. And I, I was thinking about this and I think I've drafted at this point myself, just a quick note to the Select Board to encourage them, to help them fix the problem, because Taunton doesn't seem to want to react. You know, it was, it was probably one of the only meetings where we had, although not everyone was echoed sentiments, but there were a number of residents, if you remember, who actually were on the same page as the developer, saying the developer's been trying to do something with Taunton and we're all trying to do this, but Taunton doesn't want to react. So it's nothing that's going to force the issue, but I think if we start to shed the light on a little bit, maybe it'll, it'll help. And I'll read you what I wrote, but Jerry can read it, since he's already read it. Zoning Board of Appeals respectfully asks the Lakeville Select Board to advocate on behalf of the residents and developer of the residences at LeBaron Hill that the Taunton Water Department allow for the extension of the water line from LeBaron Boulevard through Fern Ave to Precinct Street as part of Phase 6 of the development. It is our understanding that the Taunton Water Department requested that the developer shall, that the developer install a water gate as a condition of this extension. In addition to allowing the line extension, we would ask that Taun, that Taunton not require a water gate and that the line be kept active at all times, as it would improve the pressure and the quality of the water system that runs through the entire LeBaron community. Since that would render the current single meter ineffective, each homeowner would individually be charged for their water use, which is, which we feel is fair and the right thing to do. There are currently existing meters in each home and it is our understanding that the residents are willing to upgrade their water meters at their own expense to meet Taunton specifications. Thank you for consideration of this request. So basically, they're going to need to bring in a water line for Phase 6 anyways. What they're looking to do is, they're going to, they will potentially connect it anyways, but what Taunton wants to do, they want to put that gate in there, so they can only open it for an emergency. What that does is it stops the water from flowing through, which means they can do the single meter charge, which is a higher rate, which means the residents pay more and Taunton gets more money. And I understand it's a financial hit to Taunton, but I'm not so sure, in the big picture, it's that big of a financial hit to them, and it's a much more significant savings to the residents if they allow that to run right through, because there's no stop, they can't use it anymore. And the fact that Taunton just allowing this to happen, I don't believe is really any cost to them to allow it to happen, and the residents will absorb the cost to hook up their own individual meters. So the only downside to Taun, which is a downside, is potentially lose a couple of bucks, but the upside is everyone pays their fair share of the water.
Does that also eliminate the closed loop?
Yes.
Yes, that, yeah, that's why I-
That's a big one.
That, to me, is overriding.
Yes.
Yeah. It would improve, it would improve the water.
That's a no-brainer at that point.
And the quality of the water system.
Exactly.
The health of the water would be better with it.
Right, I lived there, okay? I had a house there.
That explains it.
That explains it. But I'll tell you what everybody has, including me, the water meter we have in right now is the same one that Taunton uses. So all they would have to do, get their meter readers to read our, or get our-
That would force everyone to upgrade, right?
Well, they don't, they, you put the same meters in everybody.
Well, no, but I mean, someone would have to make sure that, number one, it works, number two, that it works for everyone, right? Because you can't just have some people doing, some people not, why would you make that decision, right?
Well, yeah, everybody, you're right, everybody would have to have their own meter, but according to-
But I mean, what else?
I already have their own meter.
Well, no, I know they have their own meter, but I mean, even the, I have property in Taunton now, not all of them are even readable by Taunton, which is strange.
Yeah, but these are all brand new.
Did I, I'm sorry, you interrupted.
Look, so on that point, Jeff, and this is for you as well, John, so should we then condition this statement also to include that the existing meters, that we request, I don't know if we can require, that the existing meters that the homeowners use will satisfy or be used by Taunton?
So what I'm concerned is Taunton's going to say, even though you have your own meters,
we want to install our own meters, you know, type of thing, so.
Yeah, Jerry, the last sentence in here that I put was, there are currently existing meters in each home, and is my understanding in talking to the developer, the residents, and I guess Jeff can confirm this, the residents are willing to upgrade, so if they do need to be upgraded, their water meetings at their own expense, the residents are saying, if we need to do anything, we'll do it to meet Taunton specifications, so Taunton can't say, oh, well, you guys aren't meeting us. No, whatever you need us to do, we'll do, just let the water run through, charge us individually like we should be, and then-
Then they have to charge us. There's, 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 there's a law written.
Yeah, you will go to that tier three, it'll be a tier one.
They cannot charge residents in Lakeville any more than they charge the residents in Taunton.
Right. That's the IME we have with them from years ago, so.
The only ones that have a problem are the first phase, phase one, because that was done 20, 30 years ago.
Right.
And then it'll be a little different.
And that's a closed-loop system, so. I, I have one more point, but Chris, if you want to go, go ahead.
I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn, misremembering, but did the developer say he would foot the cost for retrofitting with new meters?
Maybe Jeff could-
I thought it was like a generous offer.
No, I think, because I think there's got to be some work done to get the system to connect. He's going to pay for all of that.
He's going to pay for all of it.
The individual households, like Jeff said, they, some of them, they're probably all set anyways, but if they're not and you need to spend a few hundred bucks to upgrade your meter, everyone's willing to-
Because we, we almost had this two years ago, and at that time, they were talking about it, and, and most of the meters that were put in the houses, the newer section, you know, where all the single families are?
Yeah.
And some of the duplexes. My understanding is we have the same meter.
Okay.
And it, like mine, he doesn't have to come and read it, he can, basically what they want to do is drive by in their car and read the meter.
Yeah, well, I would hope so, because what you could fear is that Taunton would say, no, that's not our meters, we can't guarantee the warranty or whatever, because if you purchased it, it doesn't fit what we have.
Well, I expect that, they would, like I said, they'll have a Model 9 replacing a Model 9.
Exactly.
That would be-
But I think the outcome is still to your benefit.
No matter what, the outcome is better. It's, it's to our benefit.
Yeah.
Even after you could buy an old brand new meter, they only cost $5,600 bucks.
So we all in favor of sending this letter to the Select Board?
I have one clarification, though. I thought the water gate, so as my understanding, and clarify this for me, please, is I thought the water gate was already installed, that it's closed.
No, 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 because there's, the line isn't there yet. Right now, it's just on a loop.
It's, you know where the last little cul-de-sac is before you get around?
This is the Fern Ave connection.
Right.
And so I thought there was already, the connection was already out there with the-
Precinct Street. It sits right at the end of the cul-de-sac, the last little cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Then Fern Ave goes up, there's about a, distance of about 3, 400 feet.
Okay.
That's where, that's, it's very simple. You could do it in a day.
To connect it. But I think Jerry's question is, so right now, it's not connected, there is no gate there.
Yeah.
They got to run the other 300 or 400 feet to connect.
Right.
And then Taunton says, we'll do that, but you put a gate in, and obviously, the reason they want the gate is so they can-
They can keep their-
They can keep their single usage.
My understanding is Mohammed, no, Mohammed has hired a really good attorney and he is going to, they're going to fight like, they're, my understanding, he's not going to build Phase 6 till he resolves the water issue.
Well, he needs water, so he's got to resolve it, so.
He's got to resolve it, so.
We good?
We're good.
All in favor of, well, we don't need a vote.
We don't.
The consensus is, I'm good to send this to the Select Board, and like I said, I don't know where it's going to go, what it's going to do, but we made a promise, or I made a promise, maybe half of us did.
No, I think it's, I think it's a good-
I, I don't speak for all the residents, but-
Nemo wants to-
Again, I saw the residents talking about, on the same page as them, that doesn't-
I can see the spelling mistakes.
John, John, Katie can prove that for you, if you want.
No, I'm afraid, I mean, I'd be lucky if I got a passing grade if Katie, if Katie saw this thing. And then, and on top of it, if Katie saw this thing, people reading it are going to be like, there's no way he wrote this.
Jerry, I remember spelling mistakes, remember, we're on the record as we speak?
Yes, we're still on-
It's all right, I'm only insulting myself, so.
Okay.
All right, anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:06.
Now you can say.